For the anticipation, one more minute.
Yeah, I can't believe you're here already.
Yeah, thank you. I am not the board president anymore, so I, you know, can walk in. I love it. I'm here at seven, that's when you're supposed to be here. I love the new mask.
Really? Oh, I bet you're right.
Yeah, no, it's still seven o'clock, there's two zeros here, I'm watching. All right, it's seven o'clock. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm having a meeting. For the approval of the agenda tonight, I have some amendments to propose. So I move to amend tonight's agenda with the following. To move section five reports to the consent agenda, noting that the book study will actually be rescheduled. Then to move section eight, the finance section, also to consent agenda. And move to move the motion to adjourn to exec to item number 10, to add legal to the exec meeting, and to move the curriculum workshop to the January 4th meeting. Do I first have a second? Okay, I have a second from Jordan. Any questions, comments, adjustments?
Question. Finance, you said you were moving financial statements? Or the...
No, move the finance section, section eight, to the consent agenda.
Okay.
And as a reminder, when things are in consent, we can still ask questions, so I'm not trying to prevent anyone from raising anything that we want to talk about tonight.
We have bid awards in here that need to be...
Just, just the one, and it's an existing vendor.
Okay, so we want to move that to consent agenda?
Yes.
And then we've discussed eight oh three and eight oh four a lot.
We have, yeah. I actually think that we should do a bid award.
Separately?
Separately.
Okay. How can I move to just leave that out? Is that possible?
You can amend your motion.
Okay, I amend my motion to...
Leave bid award where it is.
Leave the...
Can you give a second, or, uh, Jordan, you good?
I'll resecond that.
Are you good with that, Jordan? Anything else? All right, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving to section three, recognition.
All right, we got some student recognitions tonight, so appreciate our administrators have joined us tonight to tell us about who those students are and why they were recommended. So Dr. Bean will talk to us about some of our main year students.
All right, good evening. So first, we'd like to recognize Penelope Kellner, she's a first grader. She was nominated by our school counselor, Mrs. Weese. Penny looks out for others when playing games. She makes sure they have a turn and finds ways to ensure everyone is included in the fun. Penny helps others feel that they are, that they belong at school. And next, we'd like to recognize Vivian Nguyen, second grader, nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Pence. Vivian is such a genuine student that represents many of Afton's core values. Not only is she optimistic, cheery, and looks at the bright side of situations, she is friendly to everyone and is always willing to help out a classmate. She strives to do her best and always works hard. Congratulations to these main year students.
Dr. Powell, can you tell us about Gach?
Yeah, we have two students from Gach to recognize this month. So first is Jessica Cervantes, and she was nominated by Mrs. Nye. Jessica comes every day eager to learn and always tries her best. She perseveres through difficult tasks and has a great attitude throughout it all. I loved working with her. And then our second student from Gach is Logan Laffers-Weiler. He was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Pierce. Logan is not only intelligent, hardworking, and respectful, but he is also kind to everyone. Logan stands out among his peers because he doesn't shy away from students that may be struggling to connect with others or have a hard time building friendships. He is more than willing to give new friends a chance. Those are our two students from Gach.
Dr. Buck is joining us. Rogers, middle school students.
All right, first I have seventh grader Ryland Aberbeck, nominated by Mrs. Tripoli. Mrs. Tripoli says Ryland comes to class ready to learn. He always has a positive attitude and strives to do his best. He's kind to others in class and is always excited to share his creative ideas. I really enjoy his enthusiasm each day. Second, I have seventh grader Laney Bates, nominated by the Team Phoenix teachers. Laney tries so hard to improve. She is a hard worker and such a good friend on Team Phoenix. We are proud of the way Laney has grown so far this year. Next, I have sixth grader Oleg Doronin, nominated by Team Summit teachers. Oleg comes to school and goes above and beyond each and every day. While Oleg is extremely intelligent, has brilliant ideas, and learns grade level material very easily, he's always the first one cheering on a classmate for understanding a new concept and helping someone who may be stuck on an assignment. Oleg goes out of his way to be a friend to all. We appreciate his humbleness and kind approach to helping others on Team Summit rise. We are lucky to be his teachers. Next, I have eighth grader Jacob Johnston, nominated by Ms. Tuma. Jacob has done an amazing job this year. I worked with him a lot last year on how to handle situations, and he has done that and done a total of one eighty. He is always respectful and willing to help wherever he is needed. I am so proud of him and the work he has done to become a respectful and delightful young man. The relationships he has formed with his teachers show the progress he has made. He has a very positive and bright future ahead. And finally, I have seventh grader Isabella Kester, nominated by Ms. Weber and Ms. Guntley. Bella is one of those students that makes a quiet difference to those around her every single day at school. She is a leader in the classroom. She shows compassion towards others, even those that she doesn't know well. Bella exemplifies integrity by the way that she stays true to who she is, stands up for what she knows is right, and always puts others before herself. Even when Bella's interests are not the same as those of other students in her class, she takes time to listen, encourage, and celebrate the learning and excitement of others. The relationships that Bella has built with her peers is one that any teacher would want present in their classroom. Her kindness is unmatched, and her genuine care for her teachers and peers is remarkable. Bella is absolutely working each day to make the world a better place. Thank you.
And then Dr. Myers is joining us about our high school recognition.
Okay, in ninth grade, we have Belma M., nominated by Mr. Mittler. Belma is energetic and kind to everyone she meets. She works hard on her classwork, but is, but is consistently impressed by how she treats others. Belma always has a smile on her face and is genuinely happy to interact with anyone she meets. She can instantly start a conversation with whoever she is next to and shows compassion to others at all times. Her presence makes my classroom a more inviting place, and she is an invaluable addition to AHS. Belma makes me strive to be as open and friendly as she is.
We have Brian Franco, eleventh grade. Brian is focused and hardworking in class, always doing what he should without being told. He serves as a model for others in his class and is kind and welcoming to everyone else in the room. He works easily and equally well with all of his classmates, taking the time to help those around him who understand the material less well. He asks good questions, helps clean up the room every day as class is winding down, and promotes a healthy class environment. Perhaps best of all, he does these things without expectation of reward. He is simply a caring and empathetic individual. And then finally, we have twelfth grader Marcus Wolf, nominated by Mrs. Merlow. Marcus is a very caring and always so helpful. He cares about other students and is always the first one to lend a hand to a classmate. He is genuinely kind and is a great example to his peers. And that's AHS.
All right, moving on to section four. This is the consent agenda items. Administration recommends and I so move that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that includes the minutes from November 16, the SSD agreement, the DESI Assurance Checklist, Nomi COVID Testing Partnership, dispersment, section five reports, section eight finance minus the bid award. That was everything. Do I have any questions about anything in consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of approving, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. So moving on to section six, which is citizen comments limited to agenda items. Do we have any citizen comments? All right, and then moving on to section seven, additional citizen comments, not related to agenda items, and citizen comments. All right, then section eight, Mr. Permanent, we have left the bid award there. Do you guess on that?
Yes. I might just kick this over to Steve right away, but it is a bid award for our copiers, federal, not a single copier, and the service agreement around that, and we've got the RP evaluation. And, uh, does Steve have anything to add or anything to highlight with this?
Do you have any real difference between, essentially it's replacing current copiers? Those are on a lease that expires in spring, and we're proposing to just purchase the copiers outright and instead of giving them a lease, it's a common, so, planning on all of that happening, complying between April and August. Now, more than anyone else.
So these are new copiers or are they the ones that we...
New copiers.
Okay, not the ones that we have already?
Yeah, the ones that we have, uh, were on a seventy-two month lease that, um, they're getting pretty worn out.
Yeah.
Are we doing the same number or have we evaluated, do we have enough copiers within the district?
Yeah, so we did evaluate, and actually, copiers are either being replaced with the exact same specification. There's a few that are going up just because, uh, a little bit faster, I guess, because of the pricing of the copiers that we got. And then there's a couple that were seldomly used that were, um, maybe a little bit smaller, so we kind of right-sized to what we needed.
And then quantity-wise, were same number of copiers?
Uh, there's one less, um, that's from a high school, and that was just because the copier was not being used, uh, at all over there, and so we're kind of holding that one out for right now, and then we're gonna give it a couple months with the, with the new copiers and see if we need to add one back in.
Good, all right. Administration recommends and I so move the approval of the purchase of copiers from Marco Technologies for the amount of seventy-six thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and a corresponding annual maintenance agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kenny, thank you. All right, any other discussion, man? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That's seven to zero.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So moving to section nine, person L. I. and Mr. Evans.
Yes. Oops, hang on, too many windows. All right, uh, looks like we're only, we have two resignations, one being a retired, um, and other than that, Dr. Brock, did you have anything further on our staffing that you would like to, I notice we're getting the bus driver, so that's good.
Yeah, so, you know, certainly those areas where we know we need help, like bus drivers, and then we're also applying, you know, additional help with our health services department. So some of those recommendations will be, you know, to help out with that workload that we've been seeing within our health services, so that, that's, those are the two items I would note that's good.
Any other questions? Administration recommends and I so move the approval of staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kenny or Justin?
Justin, yeah.
Any further questions or comments or concerns? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to not, uh, seven to zero. Nine point oh two would be the additional campus security approval, and we have proposed a proposal that we were given. I guess, Dr. Dottry or you or Dr. Brock, would you guys...
I could, um, you know, if there's any question specifically about, you know, the company, I know Dr. Dottry is the one that kind of initiated getting some information from them, so I think he might be able to speak to that, but I can speak just in general. I ask him to, to do some research on this quick, and certainly, the, the event we had where we had to deal with some trespassers at the high school is something that makes you consider putting some different things in place, and so that is certainly one reason which makes this possibly timely, but I can also tell you that it has been a struggle to feel like we're providing proper supervision during packing periods in restrooms and just making sure that as we get kids back to school, you know, from, from things that we've experienced last year, it just seems we've had an increase in just the need to have adults that can provide supervision in a number of places. And so I would say that that's been ongoing, and, you know, certain, sometimes there's always a tipping point in which you decide there needs to be action and there needs to be action quick. And so this is kind of my attempt to at least be able to say we were prepared to try to do that, instead of just hoping it gets better. We're, we'd like to actually put some actions in place to, to be more strategic about, about getting a handle on things, and certainly, we would like people to see that we are responsive and that we are putting things in place to, to help our students as well as our staff, you know, keep, keep the learning up that we want to have happen, instead of having distractions all the time. So that's kind of my sense on why am I bringing this forward. It came together rather quickly, and, and so like I said, I did ask Dr. Dotry to kind of do the legwork on what, what are some of the, you know, companies out there that might be able to not only respond, but to respond quick, so that we can, we can try to apply some assistance ASAP, if that's, if that sounds like a reasonable thing to, to the school board.
Got a question. So you're saying up to maybe two additional, or two additional, additional security personnel. Now, would these be the same two every day, or would it be...
That's the, that's the hope or the thought is, with staffing allowed, because you know, you can always have somebody that gets sick.
Yeah, I just, uh, I've dealt with security on jobs and stuff and varying degrees of one way of the, you know, poor, poor quality of help, but the, to the other side of extreme, like, I wanted to be a police officer, but I couldn't get there, to be blunt. I mean, it just, but it's just, uh, I'm just, that's my concern. I understand where we're going and how we've gotten here, but I just, those are my concerns that, you know, and then also, uh...
Would Dr. Myers or the other principals there at the high school, would they be evaluating these security officers as well?
I, yeah, I think that what, I, I reached out to another, two high schools that are using this company, and so the district obviously has made the decision to use them, but I asked the high school administration, what, what has been your experience? To your point, they like to have the same people on site all the time.
Sure.
And the company also wants that to happen. They said, just like, um, a, a lot of hourly jobs right now, sometimes the people switch, but it's not like they switch every day. So they try to get consistent people, unfortunately, move on, take jobs elsewhere, you'll get replacements. And then they did say that the supervisors of the individuals are very responsive, so I imagine that certainly we could try to talk to the individuals directly, but if we feel like we need to go to their supervisors and talk about doing something differently. They said they've been receptive and responsive immediately to, you know, to any concerns that we've had. So I felt good that they, they felt like they weren't, they weren't ignored, or that if there were issues, the, the company was, was wanting to take care of it quickly.
And do we have to, is there a set time that we have to set up for those? Do we have to do it annually, or is it...
I, I think that it, it suggests that we just need to give notice, so that, I believe it's thirty days, that if we can give, you know, whenever we would like to end the partnership, thirty days' notice, we're not, not locked into an entire school year or, you know, a timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
I was curious, um, and not that I don't agree, I do agree with the additional assistance. Have we considered prior to this in, in the thought process of reallocating positions to cover any of these spots with people who are already, who the students are already familiar with and that are already in our building? Is that an option, or do you think that's difficult? Like, you know, bus drivers we were talking about, where I can get them more hours. I know we have a percentage of the day that has to be covered, and Kenny and I were just talking about that, it'd be hard because the bus drivers have to leave, but something along those lines of people that may be looking for more hours that could probably fill this versus us using an outside service.
Yeah, I, I could tell you immediately, I think the thing we don't think we can do and we wanted to stay away from, you know, our, our teachers, our administrators, our teaching assistants are typically covering classrooms and other duties due to other shortages, so I just, I didn't think we would have the ability to sort of allocate manpower that's already in the building. You know, to your point, that could be something that we might be able to engage other employee groups, but at the same time, I think that we also, I think it's nice to have someone who's already had some type of training in regards to, you know, the, the things that we're asking them to do with security, and so it might, I, I would be apprehensive to say I can put those people in positions successfully, having properly trained them and giving them guidance on what I need to do, you know, as quick as maybe we can get this up and running. So I certainly think if this proves fruitful, we might be able to think of different ways to approach this, either with staff members that we already have, or if we'd like to take this under our own umbrella at some point and say, well, we will employ the people, we'll provide the training, and then that, that could be a consideration down the road as well.
And then as far as the, and I'm sorry, you know, we interrupted something, but my, my last thought was, they answered us. Is that safe to say?
Yeah.
Dr. Myers is the, is the superseding, uh, her building and all the other principal, I just, I'm using a high school, it's not to say the other ones don't, but that, they answered us, and they understand, they answered us, and our expectations to be clear of what we expect of them and their conduct, and I mean, like, I went through this, you know, and read through their, what, what they provide and serve, and it's like, okay, that's great, if, you know, you're working on a metering platform, we're talking about students in a day, so, you know what I mean? Like, I'm curious.
Yeah, as we were, as I was going through companies to try to do this, one of the things that stood out the gate was that they have a relationship in other schools, and so they've been used to this work, the one district they've been in for about ten years. I was not able to get a lot of responsiveness. I tried with the current event staffing that we use to see if they would be able to service our needs. They weren't able to because they said they really do specialize in event staffing, so, and asking for referrals, then I had another company that I vetted, was not able to give anything back to them, as far as, this was the most responsive company that I dealt with, and this individual's been on the phone with me probably two or three times after that to make sure, and then also provided me with references with the other districts so that we can call him, vet him. So everything is set up to be, to where it seemed good. I think it's, with the exceptionalities we've had this year, I think it's probably a good time to do this, and until we can get other systems in place, and maybe can be, you know, you can always feel more restricted in schools, and it can feel more like, uh, different atmosphere as far as like locking down areas, things like that. We want to keep the school as least restricted as we can, so students feel like it's comfortable, and it still feels like school, doesn't feel like prison. This is a way to monitor the hallways so that we can do those things without having to become more restrictive. And I always think that's a better personal touch. Yeah, I really appreciate your questions. I had all of those same questions, and so the answers, the answers have been great. I, I want to say that, I just, I think to Dr. Dotry to maybe move on from the point you just made, is there sort of a protocol of getting the two people, like, letting the students know who they are, what's going on, the socialization, because I think it's also, you know, the intent of the relationship with an SRO and, and what that fosters both from a, a student awareness, you know, the awareness of the students, but also the understanding of who the different students are, different actors and that sort of thing, to just know that the students know who they are, and, I don't know, just the whole socialization thing, so that I think that heightens their ability to do their job, and I just wasn't jumping right out, you know, how, if that's on us, then if we're, if we're thinking about it, or if there's something that they've already baked in. Yeah, so Dr. Myers and I have already set up a meeting for later this week to get with the person that's the lead for this organization, so that we can actually go through that process of getting them climatized to our system, but then also understanding the level of visibility that we want to have, the types of relationships that we want them to have, so that they can become more part of the staff and not just seem like they're there just to be watching all the time, so. And that's certainly something as we evaluate. The one nice thing about being in a school the size of Afton, you're not talking about three thousand kids, you're talking about a smaller school, we have people that can actually see how the, how do these folks interact with our kids, um, and, you know, make sure they're held to that standard. And like I said, so far I've been really encouraged by how responsive their lead has been in working with me and saying the same things, so, you know, but if it doesn't work, that's when we move to the next plan, so. Appreciate you trying something.
Agreed with everything everyone said. Those are kind of my questions too. I'm, you know, as I'm reading through, I'm, if this company is going to be doing this type of work and continue to do that, it looks like, I'm looking at their training, it doesn't have any kind of training working with young people, and that might be something that we recommend that they do and connect them with that. When you just said, you know, they're going to be part of, and they're not, and we want them to be comfortable, they're monitors, but then they come in with military-style uniforms, you know, I'm like, that doesn't make it a comfortable position. So I have some concerns about that. And, and I certainly have a lot of reservations about having this become a long-term thing. I think if we can say we need to do this now, but I know in, in the past, we've hired walking monitors in, in buildings that have done that for, you know, some time, and then we have them when we need them, and then we don't have them anymore, so, that's not unusual. And if, if we're looking at monitoring, I mean, if we're, if we're having fights in the halls every day, that's a whole other thing. I haven't heard that, so if that's the case, that's something else that we need to explore.
Yeah, I think this is to be responsive towards, you have a lot of students that have come back in to school that have been out, but you also have the reality of society now, we have their drug culture issues that we're dealing with, that are very difficult because students go to places that are not in plain sight to do that activity, so having the extra set of eyes are important right now. What you always hope is that as things get more normalized, that you won't have to have that level. But, you know, the other thing you can do is you can lock down those areas and then make it more restrictive for kids, so that's kind of your other choice in this, is besides having the monitoring, you can lock them down, make sure that they're only used at certain times of the day, and then it becomes an inconvenience for people when they need to do things like over that. So it's that weight about, you're gonna have somebody that's not gonna like whatever you do in either one of those situations. So this, to me, feels a little less, even though, yeah, I don't love the fact that you have to do any of these things, so, that's just the reality of it.
The only other thing I'll bring up is just from a very pragmatic standpoint, you do have to provide some acknowledgement of the facility that you have. Eighteen exterior entrances, most of them have at least two doors, some of them four, some of them six. And so there is just a level of pragmatic, are they always locked? And is someone checking them to make sure they are always locked, or sometimes locked, or sometimes they close a little bit, but all the way? And so I think, and, and we do have parking on all sides of the building, so there are three areas where students can park, and so part of it too is to make sure, kind of as Dr. Dotry mentioned, would our ki, do we want our kids to be able to leave during the day to go to tech school or a job and go directly to the parking lot? Or do we make them walk through the front just to walk all the way to the back? You know, how, how comfortable are we with some of those things? So I think... make sure our grounds, especially in an area where we have our most, the most students, we have the most kind of in-and-out access for very good reasons? I think that also has to play into this as well. And some of our other buildings, not quite as many exterior places, there is no reason for students to be going in and out to the parking lot. You know, this is a little bit unique when you have this type of dynamic at the, at the high school level and try not to restrict some of those things that we think can, can be safely allowed.
Not to restrict those things, but also not to utilize staff who have a lot on their plates that we want them to be focused on, to be monitoring things like doors, using the right people to monitor the right things.
Yeah. And even folks just monitoring who's coming on to the lot, usually it's a student, usually it's a parent, but sometimes it's not. And so, how are we able to maybe monitor some of that as well? And then when people that we do want on campus, because it is a student, it is a parent, just making sure they're getting to where they need to go in a timely fashion and things of that nature.
One, one more thing. I, I appreciate the challenges you're dealing with, and I really appreciate hearing the description of we're trying to figure out how to move forward with something that will address the challenges in front of us, but we're also going to do our best to maintain the culture of the building and the flow of the building. Knowing that and knowing the approach that we'll take with integrating this and socializing these folks in and making sure that the, the school knows who they are, is there a mechanism that's already understood with the company that, hey, we can throw up a flag and say, hey, this person is, they might be a fit somewhere else, but they're not a fit here, we gotta make a move? And has that been, has that mechanism been discussed? Because there are some contracts you get into and they say, well, we might deal with that in a few weeks, and then there are some where they say, say it, and we take care of it. And I didn't know where, if that, if that was part of the next phase of dialing them or if that had already been talked about or?
I don't know where that's.
That was a piece of feedback that I heard back on this company that we, we heard is that they are willing to work with you if there's somebody that's just not a fit. So, I mean, I can't speak from experience on it because I haven't been equipped yet. So, you do truly know that, but the experience that was had in the other district was that they were responsive and they did what they needed to do to get it done.
Sometimes it's written into the contract. I've seen that in contracts, that's why I didn't discuss it at all. Okay. But thank you for pulling.
Any more? My last bit before we move on for approval, it would help also, I think, you know, I've got to the high school, as many of us do, that maybe a friendly reminder to the students of accepted behavior wouldn't be a bad idea during this process of, you know, do not let people in regardless of who your friends are, and please have everything with you. Don't need to go to your car to get a pen, you know, stuff like that that compromises our security. Innocent nature was inevitably led us to this point. So, I think that that would be helpful also, just a suggestion from the state. And with that, the district administration recommends an ISO move, the approval of additional school and campus security. Do I have a second?
Second.
Arnie? Any other further questions? I'm good. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. I'm moving on to the amended section 10. I make motion to adjourn to an executive session regarding pursuant personnel to section 610.0213 and to collective bargaining 610.021 and to real estate 6.0.021 and to legal, the number of which I am unsure at this time. 610.021. You want me to tell you? I'll give you, I'll give you this time, but it's 610.010, I think. I'll double check this. Second. Requires the roll call vote, is it working?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We will push by, and then we will convene there, and then we will come back to look at the school improvement items after we finish up our executive session. Okay.
Mira?